See that it is 6:30. We are. Looks like we're missing the vice chair. I don't see Crystal, is she?
Let's see. I don't see her either, and I have not heard from her. But we do have a quorum.
Okay.
She may pop in later.
Maybe just a minute.
Crystal's here, let me just move her over.
Okay. All right, looks like everybody is in the meeting, so I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order of the American Canyon Planning Commission. So shall I go, I'll go ahead and say the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. Can we go ahead and have roll call?
Yes. Commissioner Altman.
Present.
Commissioner Blah. Commissioner. Commissioner Wong.
Present.
Vice Chair Malari.
Yeah.
Chair Navarro.
Here. Okay, do you have something to cover?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Thank you for joining us for the August 26th, 2021 City of American Canyon Planning Commission meeting. This meeting is being held entirely virtually in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. The format for tonight will be similar to that of an in-person meeting. In addition to the Zoom platform, the meeting will be broadcast on cable TV channel 28, on YouTube, and streamed live on the city's website. You will see members of the Planning Commission and city staff on your screen. All members of the public will participate in listen-only mode. Public comment is invited for non-agenda items during the public forum section of the meeting and on each agenda item. Please follow these steps to make your comment. When the Chair calls for public comment and you wish to speak, click the raise hand button if joining by computer. If joining by phone, dial *9 to raise your hand. When it is your turn, I will announce your name and invite you to speak. You may see a message saying the host would like you to unmute your microphone. If you get this message, click unmute myself and begin speaking. To unmute yourself by phone, dial *6 and begin speaking. Video will not be turned on, only audio. You have up to three minutes to make your comments. At the end of your three minutes, I will ask you to conclude your comments and quickly to conclude your comments quickly, and I will mute your audio once you're done. The agenda for this meeting is available on the city's website. As a standard practice, community members are allowed to comment one time on each agenda item. We ask for your patience and understanding when there are technical difficulties. This concludes my opening.
Okay. All right, so I guess I can go ahead and read about public comment. So we have public comment, there's a time reserved for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of interest that are not on the agenda and are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. It is recommended speakers limit their comments to three minutes each, and it's requested that no comments be made during this period on items on the agenda. Members of the public wishing to address the Planning Commission on items on the agenda should comment via email prior to the start of the meeting or verbally comment on an item during the meeting. Click the hand raise button if you're joining by computer when your name is called. For the items that are not on the agenda and no adverse conclusions can be drawn from the Planning Commission that does not respond to public comment at this time. Speakers are asked to please speak clearly and provide their name. With that, is there any public comment?
We do have somebody who has raised his hand, Justin Hamilton-Holl.
Okay.
Mr. Hall, I'm going to allow you to unmute yourself. Please begin.
Are you, if I hear me, oh, here we go. I am very, I'm going to say, I'm going to say I'm going to be very happy to help with that Cooper that I'm hoping I get a good new on day, build a new house, build a new house. And other thing is that I looking over when I walk with my dog other day over skateboard park. There's a way I can make something over there, like there's no park there or no table there where you walk over the bridge back of Dawson Way, so I don't know. My good news is I hope that Brad Cooper can get us a good new that and build a new house.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hall. Is there any other public comment?
If you have public comment for a non-agenda item, please raise your hand at this time. There are no hands being raised, Chair Navarro.
Okay, great. With that, we'll close public comment. And open the floor. Our director, is, are there any agenda changes for this evening's meeting?
Thank you, Chair Navarro, there are no changes tonight to the agenda.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. So let's move to the consent calendar. We have two sets of minutes for, on the consent calendar. One for July 22nd for our Planning Commission meeting and one for the July 29th joint, special joint meeting with the City Council and Planning Commission. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar in the minutes?
Chair Navarro, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Okay. Any seconds?
A second.
Okay. All right, roll call, please, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Altman. Commissioner Blah.
Hi.
Commissioner Wong.
Hi.
Vice Chair Malari. Chair Navarro.
Hi. Okay, with that, we can move to the main items in open public hearing for Watson Ranch, Watson Ranch Lot 10 Design Permit Investing Tentative Subdivision Map for the Development of 219 Single Family Residential Units on a 27.17 acre site.
I guess I'll just introduce this for a second. Chair Navarro, the Planning Commission, Will, and he is the project manager for this project. He has a brief presentation. And the applicant and the master developer for Watson Ranch is also present with quite a cadre of consultants, and they have a presentation as well. So.
Okay, please proceed, Mr. He.
Okay. Here we go. Sorry about that. Good evening, Chair Navarro, Planning Commission, and members of the public. Very happy to be here today to give a presentation on the Watson Ranch Lot 10 project. So here's the agenda for the presentation tonight. I have a location map and a project description of the project. And we'll go over some of the subdivision map itself. Some of the architecture and design elements of the homes proposed. And then I have a brief showing of the landscape plan, but the applicant's landscape architect team is here too, so they'll follow up. And lastly, I have staff's recommendation and and explanation of the CEQA compliance for the project.
Okay.
So here's the location map for Watson Ranch Lot 10. It's the square within the red perimeter there. It's kind of in the center of the Watson Ranch specific plan, I think. It's on the south side, it's going to be accessed by the future extension of Rio Del Mar. And there's also a road that's, that's the future extension of Rolling Hills Drive that I can access the site. To the west is the Lemus Point Apartments and to the further down south where the Watson Ranch lots 14 and 15 that was, both of these projects were previously approved. And further to the west, we have Harley 29, Walmart, a lodge, and the Dolby Lumper. So Watson Ranch is 27 acres and proposed for 219 single-family homes. So here's the project description, as I just mentioned. Included listed, the 219 single-family lots will be six interior streets and six additional parcels. Those, these are non-residential parcels. The site is located in the Watson Ranch Medium Density Residential 16 Zone, or MDR 16. And they all of the single-family lots are permitted use. The size of the lots, I took a look at their table, it seems like the smallest one is about 3198, so about 3,200 square feet are the smallest ones, but everything from there, it goes all the way up to 6,000 square feet, I think. Some of the features of the site, of the homes, two-story homes for all of them, three to four bedroom options, and the two-car garages for each of the homes. So here's the site plan for the Lot 10. As I mentioned, Rio Del Mar is on the south side. To the west, we have Loop Road. And then inside, we have six new streets shown in gray. So streets A, D, E, and F are going west to east, and then streets B and C are going north to south. And where Rolling Hills Drive enters north, it becomes Street B. The two, there are two emergency vehicle access parcels shown in a red on the east side, and that's to help our fire apparatus have some more flexibility in case of emergencies. And then to the west side, the applicant's team has proposed a pedestrian path that's shown in the yellow there that will connect the future Loop Road to Street C, but it gives the opportunity for folks to just walk over to Lemus Point. So a very interesting pathway there. Here's an aerial view of the site. There's right now, it's currently just a vacant site, and those are the the white lines indicate where the future roads will be. And to the south, you can see where the southwest is where the ruins are right now. So here is the Watson Ranch specific plan development standards for the MDR 16 Medium Density Residential Zone. The applicant complies with all of the size within death requirements. And the setbacks and lot coverage aspects of these homes will be determined when they submit their individual plot plans. That's in a later stage when they submit those to the building division. I do want to show a little bit of the architecture. There are three styles that they have proposed. The first one is the ranch style, which is shown here with a white and beige option, as well as a dark gray and beige option. And second is their farmhouse style. Have three different color schemes to to select from. And then the last one is their traditional style of architecture. So lots of different options to choose from. Here is an example of their floor plans. Hey, this is the floor plan for the 1799 square foot model. There is a two-car garage on the first floor, as well as the kitchen and dining room. And then there is a master bedroom and three additional bedrooms on the second floor. And here is a snapshot of the landscaping plan, as I mentioned. And the landscape architect will talk more about that after me. So in regards to CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, the project is consistent with the already certified Watson Ranch Specific Plan Environmental Impact Report. And their mitigation measures will be a part of the conditions of approval for the projects. And the Watson Ranch Lots 10, both the design permit and the subdivision map complies with the permitted use of the Watson Ranch specific plan. And that's about it. The staff's recommendation is to approve the Watson Ranch Lot 10 Design Permit and recommend City Council approve the Watson Ranch Lot 10 Best Intender Map. So I'll be here if you have any questions, but the applicant and also property owners here.
Okay. So shall we go, go ahead and allow them to make their presentation before asking you questions?
Great. Okay, great. Chair Navarro and members of the Planning Commission, this is Chris Sabalas from DR Horton. We're excited to be in American Canyon and happy to be here tonight to present this project. I have a very, very brief presentation, and then I'm going to turn it over to our landscape architect who wants to talk about a few specific items. My project is very brief because of the detail that William put into his, so I don't have a whole lot to show, but I'll go ahead and share my screen. So it was Watson Ranch Lot 10. A little bit about DR Horton, as I said, we're excited to be in American Canyon. We are the largest home builder in the United States, and we're in 29 states across the country. Lot of experience building homes and excited to be here. We're also doing lots 14 and 15, as you may know, building homes on that site in the Watson Ranch area. So it is part of the Watson Ranch specific plan, it's Lot 10, which is outlined here in sort of the pink color. Few things about the site plan. Strategically, we've oriented front doors towards the streets on Rio Del Mar, which is the main drive into it, really nice roundabout in the center for entry into the project. Every house has a two-car garage and a two-car driveway and a private backyard, which is, you know, awfully very nice for the residents right now, and then direct connection to, to the trail system and really to all the amenities that are going to be built down the road as part of the specific plan of Watson Ranch development. A little bit about the architecture, we did choose three styles that we felt went quite well with the site. And we have nine different color schemes for the three houses. They, the house has started at a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath, and move up to a four-bedroom, three-bath. One of the bedrooms is down in our largest plan, which is nice for multi-generational families living in the same house. Our site plan, as shown, lots of landscaping, landscaping used as buffers, it's all drought tolerant. And we're working through some of the details of the screening, the fencing along Rio Del Mar. And really excited to move this project along. Our entire consulting team is here, the architect, civil engineer, landscape architect, and the master developer for questions. I would love at this point to turn it over to Daniel at SWA to do a pre-brief presentation about some of the work we're studying on Rio Del Mar. So with that, I'll stop sharing, but we are here for questions and turn it over to Daniel. Thank you.
Chris, I'm just sharing my screen here. Can you guys see my screen?
Yes.
Great. So I was on a call with, a couple days ago with Brent, and he, you know, said it might, my night, sorry, might be nice to share this with you and showing kind of the general context of parcel 10 in relation to some of the larger work we're doing with the streetscape in the future, Napa Valley Ruins and Garden Site, as well as Lot 14 and 15, so you kind of get a general overview of what that looks like here, Rio Del Mar being the main east-west connector with the River to Ridge Trail being part of that, as well as the Vine Trail along the eastern edge of parcel 10. So in general, the principles of the planting that we're working with would be, you know, seasonality, meaning plants that kind of show change over time, a mix of both evergreen and deciduous. Drought tolerance, always important these days that we work with native plants and adapted plants to the Bay Area climate, as well as durability, meaning plants and trees that, you know, the maintenance of the city can kind of work with. So I'm just going to kind of show you the kind of layers of planting we're considering of, for the design. First and foremost, on the edge of Rio, we have a buffer planting, which really creates a sense of separation between the kind of public right-of-way and the kind of interior of the project. And that buffer planning also extends along the kind of north-south edge along the River to Ridge Trail. So it would be a mix of sort of evergreen plants of coffee berry, manzanita, and carpet manzanita, as well as some accent trees, and all of these would be essentially native planting. And to sort of contrast that, running on the planting strips and kind of north-south along from Rolling Hills up until the project, would be a mix of perennials and grasses and kind of ornamental grasses in the planting strips that would really provide a kind of sense of movement of grasses and color, and then really create a strong variety and texture on the kind of pedestrian experience along the street, as well as on select locations to sort of contrast the sort of changing quality of the grasses and the plants would be these evergreen areas with sea anemophis, creeping raspberry, and cavity brush, which would all be sort of, keep kind of a lush green quality. They're native, and they're also drought tolerant as well, and they grow very well in this climate. The primary street tree along Rio that we've, we're looking at right now is a London Tree, which is a very durable and really nice-shaped, solid street tree, very reliable. And then to accent that, we have on select locations along the edge of parcel 10, as well as along the Rio Del Mar streetscape, we have the coastline oak, the kind of tree that, you know, everyone's probably pretty familiar with that connects us to the larger landscape of kind of the Bay Area and the kind of oak woodland quality. And these would be at select locations or at the roundabouts at the end of some of these streets here, connecting into the Rio Del Mar streetscape and at the gateways to the trails as well. And then from Rolling Hills, we're continuing the language of olive trees, which continue down up rolling hills and into the project, as well as a buffer zone along the east sort of eastern edge, which would also be a nice shade provided for the vine trail. And then finally, on Loop Road, we have London plane trees, which are, you know, a great reliable Bay Area tree that we can, that works really well in streetscapes. And, you know, would provide a nice consistent shade spaced about 35 feet apart. Within the actual parcel 10, we're showing a mix of smaller flowering trees, a mix of Western Redbud native tree, Arbutus Marina, which is an evergreen tree, a small tree, as well as, you know, trying to relate to some of the orchard history of this area, the foyu persimmon or other potential fruiting trees that we're considering for some of the yards. And then when you combine that all together, I think you get a really rich palette of a variety of landscape experiences. And it really will connect it to the larger site and what we're doing on, you know, some of the other parcels on the project of Watson Ranch. We've been working with the Civil to really create a generous setback along Rio that really provides you a sense that you're not on top of these houses, but you really have a strong sense of separation. You can see it varies, you know, from 20 feet up to 25 feet. And, you know, these are actually, the plan is somewhat seething, it's actually a much larger site than it actually looks like when you see it at the scale. And then on the other side of Rio, between Rolling Hills and Loop, you know, we have also a variety of, you know, you know, good-sized setbacks, which allows to get decent planting in those areas. One thing to remember too is that this, this whole Rio is actually sloping down from, from the right to the left in the drawing. And at a few select locations along Rio too, we will be working with, kind of developing a language for furniture that will relate to some of the concepts we have for the ruin site, so, you know, working with steel and wood and trying to create, and also some of the repurposed rubble elements. So this is all kind of part of the design language we're developing, but some of those elements will appear in streetscape as benches to sort of create a sense of consistency. And that's all I have for you today, I just had to answer any questions.
Okay. All right. So if there's no more presentation, maybe we'll go first to check public comment?
If you have public comment on this item, wish to speak, please raise your hand now.
Perhaps this would be a good time to open the public hearing.
Okay.
And if there are any disclosures by commissioners, now would be the appropriate time.
Okay, so let's go ahead and open public, the public here. Okay, so let's go ahead and open public, the public hearing for this matter. And commissioners, is there any disclosures of ex parte communication regarding this matter? Okay, seeing none. Let's go ahead. Is there any anyone from the public wishing to speak on this matter?
We have a couple of people in the audience. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Please raise your hand at this time. No one is raising, oh, but we do have Justin Hamilton Hall who's raised his hand.
Okay.
Hi, Justin, please.
Hi, Nicole. How good you mean, Mr. Ross. Where is where where the new house gonna be on the map?
Could answer that question for Justin. This project is just north of Vintage Ranch. Are you familiar with the ruins over there just north of Vintage Ranch?
Yes, it'd be it it'll be back of Walmart's area.
Um, east of there, right in the in the empty land, just north of the ruins on the east side of town.
Okay, thank you, Brett Cooper.
Okay, any other public comment, Ms. Jones?
If you have public comment on this item, please raise your hand at this time. Nobody is raising their hand.
Okay, so we will close public comment at this time and open it to questions of the commissioners. The view is a little different, so I can't see anybody saying. Okay, Commissioner Goff, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Chair Navarro. Just a couple of quick questions. And I don't know if Mr. Affleck is still in. Yeah, he's still here. I was looking at the streets and the trees and excellent presentation. Thank you very much. Excellent detail. The fourth for northern barrier, it looked like there was evidence of tree planting and things on the other side of the street, but I don't know if that's actually something you guys are doing. Was that just drawn in there? Are you guys planting trees on the, I think it's Street A on the north side of Street A?
Are you talking about the very top of parcel 10? Yeah, so I I tried to gray that out to indicate that that's not part of yeah.
But I was uncertain there.
Yeah.
And a big question for me, knowing the location of this development to the north is the potential school site and also a park. And to the south, we have not only a hotel development possibly coming in, but also the ruins and gardens. So a concern for me is walking and bicycling, both safeties in each direction. I saw some notes in there about wheelchair access on some of the curbs and some curb changes. I'm assuming these are going to be full size sidewalks. Is there any bicycle lanes in this development?
I yeah, we I would maybe defer to Terry or Jason on that thing a little bit more.
Andrew, let me let me answer that question just sort of globally. So the vine trail, Napa Valley Vine Trail, which the easements now secured from the Vallejo Ferry Terminal to San Lane, it's 44 miles, I believe. There's, I think, almost a mile and a half right through the center of the project. And then that crisscrosses, that crisscrosses through and intersects with the vine trail, I mean, excuse me, with the ridge to river, which connects the open space to the Napa River. And then in addition to that, there's extensive bike paths throughout the entire project. And the the Napa Valley Vine Trail is a class one, so 12 feet wide, two feet on each shoulder, so it's 14 feet in in width. So it's it's there's a pretty significant bicycle pedestrian grid throughout the entire project. And, you know, for anybody, you know, not only in terms of just exercising and walking and enjoying the the project and riding bicycles, but in terms of attending the schools. You can, you know, obviously walk safely to Canyon Oaks, you can walk safely to to the parcel eight site, the designated school site as well as to the high school.
Excellent. The other question I have is really about Rio Del Mar. Thanks for the traffic circle. Excellent. I love that, by the way.
It's a great feature.
Yeah. Is there intended parking on Rio Del Mar or not?
Yes. You can see, Daniel, if you pull up, if you can, it's probably easier to if you want to look at the actual.
See the diagonal parking.
You can see the diagonal parking.
As well as a strip of parallel park along this
Exactly.
all along this edge here as well.
Yeah, I didn't notice that. Okay. And then if I remember, the intention, I believe you talked about is to make sure some of the accent features that are going to be involved in the Ruining Gardens project are also sprinkled throughout this neighborhood to to draw that together. Is that where?
Yeah, and we're working really hard on the on on not only the as Daniel pointed out, on the landscaping plan, the setbacks off of to the north side of Rio Del Mar. And but we're also working on the vertical element of it, including not only the the fencing that will be, you know, paralleling Rio de Mar as you had east, west, west, east, but also the tree planting. And then also trying to tie it into the hotel and ruins in terms of just, you know, the type of materials we use. So and then and then the same thing in terms of what we do throughout the rest of the project, you know, all the way through Loop Road is I think you'll you'll get a key, key, key idea that, you know, these things are all tied together from these visual visual cues as you're moving through the project when you get, you know, a fair ways away from the ruins and hotel.
That's good. Excellent. Thank you. I have one more question. Which I start thinking about now as I advance in age. I noticed no single, single story houses. Was there a reason behind that? Or is it they're just not in demand anymore? Or was it just a matter of I don't know, access lot size? I'm not sure.
Chris, you want to take that on?
Yeah, more. Yeah, Terry, thanks. More than happy to take that. So you're right, we commissioner, we do not have any single story houses on here and it really is just a function of the lot dimensions. These lots with nice side yards and backyards, which are very much in demand are very tough to put a single story house on and get enough usable square footage. So that that's the primary reason. We do have, as I mentioned, that one plan, the 1859, which does include what could be a master bedroom down and or a multi generation house, so that if you wanted a master down, you could have it on the main living floor in that one plan.
That's what I was thinking. I was just wanted to make sure, or if it was a matter of single stories just aren't in demand as much as they used to be.
They are still in demand, but it's a it's more of a the ability to put them on a the size of a lot that you need is is problematic.
Thank you. I guess my only other concern was really around some of the fruit trees that I saw, the pomegranate tree or the possible fruit trees that are used kind of in I believe around the walkways. That's always an issue for me because of maintenance and causing issues that way. So I, you know, non fruit trees would be a suggestion for me. If it's the homeowner putting it in, then they have that responsibility for the fruit trees. But if it's part of the meridian and that stuff and it comes to a little bit messier, that's my experience. Other than that, I am done. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other next set of questions, Commissioner Altman?
There we go. I was just having some difficulties getting to the unmute button. So my apologies. Not a lot for me, but I I'll say I happen to actually like the concept and and Mr. McGrath has previously explained the the fruit trees and the legacy of them. So I I kind of appreciate them, even though they may create as Commissioner Goff points out, a little bit of a maintenance nightmare occasionally, but that's where good selection of which tree, fruit bearing tree to use makes a a whole lot easier. I can't say I'm an arborist, so I am not familiar at all with any of the particulars, but I'm going to trust that those who are the professionals know what the right ones to pick are going to be. But I do love the color variations and and height variations that are being shown. I think that the use of of, you know, rubble materials to tie everything together throughout the project is is really a brilliant concept because it really gives that sense of place. You know, as I look at this and I see it kind of coming together, it gives me more of a sense and and to this, you know, Terry, Terry McGrath, you deserve a ton of credit, but it it gives a sense of an old fashioned master planned community, even though it is not truly a fully master planned community. Each section is kind of come creating its own life. But that's that sense of place and unity across everything is is really notable. The the, I guess, broader questions I've got, and I think I already know the answers and I'm asking just kind of to put on record. But everything is going to be plumbed for gray water at this point. Solar is going to be, you know, it's going to be solar ready, if not solar already installed. Am I correct with this?
Commissioner Altman, sorry, I was struggling with getting the mute button off. Yes, everything will have, it will be solar, solar will be installed on the homes. It's it's a it's law. So all the homes will have solar. And the garages are typically pre plumbed with for an electric vehicle. So the individual vehicle owner can then pull the wiring and the charger that they need for their particular car.
And gray water as well, recycled water?
Recycled water. I I'm going to defer to the civil engineer. That's really more there. They've got the details on that.
Chris, let me jump in here on that because it's a little, it's a little little trickier issue than you would think. All the streets will have recycle in it to deal with all the landscape mediums and and landscape edges. But I think I might have Erica or Brent or somebody from the city address this from a from the city perspective in terms of what we're required to do. And Erica, I see you there.
Yes, thank you. Hi, good evening, commissioners. And I sent an email shortly before the meeting this evening. Commissioner Wong brought this question, I think, yesterday with regard to why the homes or if the homes would be plumbed. There's the the technology or the state requirements aren't with the times yet. And while we're getting closer, there's still difficulty and a lot of red tape for the the city to just allow every single home to have recycled water hooked up to it. As it's been brought in the past and prior droughts, you have to have a site supervisor. So someone in the house would be to go through training and be certified to handle this water that's going on in the home. That's why it's easier for the commercial users and the multifamily housing units to have these to to be to have management that's in charge of this because not only do the homeowners would have to be registered and submit reporting requirements, the city and then would have to report on those homeowners. So there's there's a big process right now. I our current city manager and former public works director put out a very nice response to a homeowner several years ago that I shared with you this evening, that probably more eloquently puts the reasons in the red tape that we have right now, but we're working on it, the state's working on it. We want to have it an easier use. We've already broadened that use in our drought right now by being able to deliver to everyone who wants it, free recycled water. It's just, we're just not quite there yet to have it directly plumbed. And I hope that responds to your question that you got asked this evening.
It does. Thank you. Appreciate that. That'll do it for me for now.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Altman. Do you have any questions, Commissioner Malarie?
Yes, just a few other questions are kind of answered with the other commissioners thus far, but the trees, I think it was not the ones the little Christmas tree looking was, but the little bigger ones. I'm just thinking of like, you know, the roots and maybe like the buckling of the sidewalks. To what extent does that maybe the history of the trees? Should we not be worried about that? I mean, trees have their life of their own, but.
So just to answer that real quick, quick. We've placed all those big heritage oak trees that you're referring to in very large planting areas. So essentially the root system of a tree is a mirror of its canopy. So as far as the canopy goes, is where the roots will go. So we've given in excess of what it needs for those trees because we know how much space they really need. But they also look better when they kind of stand by themselves. So it kind of helps us. So so we're not, we're not squeezing them and they'll be buckling sidewalks in any any condition we've provided.
Okay, perfect. And then let's see. Just just curious kind of with them, you know, with the permission trees and things like that, is that would that be up to the each home will have it already planted there or is it just like up to the buyer, the homeowner, I guess, that would preserve that lot, saying, no, I don't want that that the fruit tree or how's that work? Maybe Terry, you can respond to that or Chris. Just, I guess, any landscaping in general, like if, you know, they were to come in.
Sure. So the the the, you know, the the backyards of the homes will all be at the discretion of the homeowners, the front yards will all be done. And so based upon the palette that our landscape architect comes up with. And if there are trees that are problematic, we'll certainly, you know, attempt to weed those out to make sure that we don't have long term issues with things dropping on the streets, you know, to cause that type of issue.
And then we're we will handle Crystal will handle all of the major roadways. The the landscaping, so Rio Del Mar, Lou, Newell Extension, Rolling Hills Drive, et cetera.
That's all I have right now. Sure.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Malarie. Commissioner Wong, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Navarro. Thank you, William and Mr. McGrath and your team for the excellent presentations. I'm following along the theme of my fellow commissioners' questions and I probably something on all of our minds since we're all residents and we're in a stage two drought restriction. That's why we're, you know, interested in the landscaping and whatnot. I I understand that the homeowners, of course, will have absolute control over whatever they ultimately decide to plant. But as far as the initial offering of what you're offering to them for the front yard and offering to put in the backyard, can you speak as to whether a grass lawn is part of that plan?
Well, Commissioner, grass lawns will be not will not be part of the front yard typical landscaping that we'll be putting in. And so, Daniel, feel free to jump in here if you want to talk about any of the particular drought tolerant palette that's going in the front yard.
You're on mute.
We're using all drought tolerant trees and, you know, given the nature of these lots, you know, we have the driveway and so there's actually very little room for, you know, big pieces of lawn. So we'd probably use a more a native drought tolerant grass or some sort of ground cover that wouldn't be your traditional, you know, water hungry lawn.
Thank you for reaffirming that because that is one of the things that the city has an active program for homeowners actually to remove their lawns, a cash for grass program. So thank you for speaking to that. The other question that I had is when you talk about some of the landscaping, which sounded beautiful, by the way. I I wasn't, one of the things that I've noticed living in a more established neighborhood, and I just thought I would I would mention this is sometimes the the shrubbery or the bushes that are planted near corners and crosswalks, they can grow to be rather tall over time. they can grow to be rather tall over time and block visibility. So I just thought I would throw it out, throw that out there in case that hadn't um come into your purview yet.
Just to to that point, we we have been working with um fire and um, you know, public works and really getting us sent to make sure that our our site quarters are clean and we have a plant that works to their liking, so we're we're vetting all that stuff.
Excellent. And my last question is, is I'm very excited to hear about the new bicycle connections for the Vine Trail and and the Ridge Trail, I really like that. And so when those extensions are made, will I'm I'm assuming there'll be signs up saying, this is a bike path. Um who puts the signs up and the markings on the trail saying this is the bicycle path, share the path? Who's responsible for putting that kind of signage and trail markings up? Is it the developer or is it the city?
Erica, you want me to jump in here on this one?
You you may, I know traditionally, I'll let you respond.
Um, we have a a certain allocation to spend on the Vine Trail. I think in the end uh it will be, it's an easement to the Napa Valley Vine Trail. It is not a uh city easement. So my expectation is that the Vine Trail organization will have a lot to do with not only the improvements, but the ongoing maintenance and striping and signage and everything else.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you so much for elaborating on that, because I only just realized that our own linear path, the Bay Trail, we have no signage saying it's a bicycle trail. So that's what prompts me to ask about this one, since it's a a new development. Um it seems like you've put a lot of thought into it, so I thank everyone for the comprehensive presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other um comments or questions from the commissioners? Um if not, I'll go ahead. I I do have a couple myself. Um I just wondered, is there gonna be any fence or wall around um or around any of the perimeters? And um and I'm just thinking also about um the crossing over in the of of the train tracks and and kind of the access between houses and the and the train tracks.
Um so on on Rio Del Mar, there definitely will be a fence on the northern edge of Rio Del Mar. Um and I'm not sure, Commissioner Navarro, on your question regarding the the train. Ultimately, Rio Del Mar is scheduled to be a separated rail crossing, so it will go below the train tracks. You know, where uh where the adobe lumber is to the north and intersect at twenty nine.
Okay, okay. That's I was just, yeah, I wasn't, I just thought that there'll be areas there that are pretty close to train tracks, thinking of families, kids, and and then sound of train coming by, you know, for the.
Yeah, there there will also be a fence along that that um eastern edge of the of the uh UP right away, so the western edge of the project. Um that said, we're just coincidentally doing some track work here as we're putting in the infrastructure, so we're lifting the track south of South Napa Junction in the next few days. And I think there's two trains a year scheduled for that track.
Okay. Um and then I was wondering about street lighting. Um the plan for that and how that, you know, I mean, you we need the lighting's needed for safety and visibility and all of that, um rather also security, but um also light pollution and what I I um I just didn't see, catch the the lighting plan, is there one yet?
Daniel, you wanna you wanna take that on? I will, let me let me caveat it that we're we're commissioner, we're still working on the actual uh light standard itself. Um and part of that is what we're um still working through with the Rio Del Mar, the width of it, the trees, the fences, and the the connection to the ruins across. And so the 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 light standards in terms of sort of these visual cues are gonna be really important, so we've looked at a couple of different models. But let me let me hand it over to Daniel, he can give a few more specifics on it.
Yeah, I would I would say that um what we, you know, conceptually plan to do is, you know, uh north-south Rio, uh sorry, Rolling Hills and Newell will be consistent with lower um Rolling Hills and Newell in terms of the light, uh the kind of city standard. And as Terry mentioned, Rio Del Mar being a significant east-west connector with the River to Ridge Trail, we're looking at a number of different options. We have run photometrics and like calc sun on everything, so we're meeting all the standards, et cetera. Um so we definitely consider that, and that's all part of the process.
Okay, and then I'm I have one last thing on parking um within the residential community. Um it there will be street parking allowed. I I think it's probably good um to have two-car garages, because um people still like a lot of cars. Um uh so I'm just wondering, uh is that gonna be permissible? Are we planning on doing any permitting of that? And then on the cul-de-sacs where it's kind of like a turnaround, is there gonna be parking? Can people park on those cul-de-sacs in the courts?
Uh the on the, let me let me take on the cul-de-sacs. At this stage, I don't believe we're allowing any parking on those cul-de-sacs because of EVA, garbage trucks turning around, et cetera. Um I think the other part of it, as well as we don't want those cul-de-sacs to to be, you know, people driving through the neighbor neighborhood that aren't part of the project to hop on the the Vine Trail or the Ridge to River. There's, there'll be more logical places to park. Um and so it it's it's gonna be greatly discouraged at the end of those cul-de-sacs that deaden into the Vine Trail. And then I'll let Chris take on what's happening within the neighborhoods.
Yeah, thanks, Terry. Um so um there will be street parking um in within the development um uh throughout the property. Again, there's two-car garages and two, the driveways widen up for two cars. So we feel like there's gonna be sufficient parking um to avoid, you know, any any issues uh on that. People do like their cars. That's for sure.
Okay, all right. Um so those were, um that's that's all I had. Um so if we uh uh open it up one more time, any other questions from from the commissioners?
Here, I have a couple, if you don't mind.
Yeah, absolutely, go.
They're actually very simple one, I forgot to ask about. The proposed walkway that goes from the project onto the Loop Road, what's the width of that? And are we planning on lights there? And also, are we planning any type of landscape there?
Yeah, let me let me sort of take it on um Commissioner Goff uh globally or holistically, and then I'll let I'll let Dan answer that behind that. So the the reason there's a walkway there is that there is a pedestrian path that is paralleling the railroad tracks. And then it makes a left-hand turn at the northern edge of the affordable site and then intersects Loop and then connects back into the the rest of the paths. And so that's that's why it it looks a little unusual there, but instead of bringing it all the way out to the edge of Rio Del Mar and then having it come back up, because as you know, Rio is ultimately gonna start to start to fall fairly severely there as it goes under the railroad tracks. So that's the reason why it's it's not edged right at Loop. And then we've looked at having a a platform crossing there. Um and we're still working on that. I believe we're still working out some of the details with Fire. Um so that it's a very, very clearly marked connector across the street. Um and then Dan, I'll let you talk about the actual whis, and I know Will's here on here too, so if you don't have the exact dimension.
Yeah, I bet Will knows it better than I do at this point, if he's if he's available. I see his name there.
Well, if if you're hearing us and you're still listening.
Will help, nah. Now, the uh I will tell you that the River to Ridge Trail, which is on the south side of Rio, is wider because it's a more significant east-west connector. Um Will, I see you, microphone pop on there.
Hey, can you answer me?
Yes, thanks, Will.
Okay, great. Yeah, I think that right now um the pathway would be, continue to be eight feet across the across the road, Loop Road, and eight feet into the subdivision to Lot Ten, until it connects to the to the internal sidewalk for uh for Lot Ten there.
And Will, are we still looking at a raised platform on that?
That's correct, yes. The the pathway across Loop Road would be a raised kind of tabletop type pathway, so it'd be a clear indicator to traffic and anybody on the street that you need to slow down, that there's pedestrians and bicycles and other people crossing in this mid-block crossing.
As you, as you know, it also slows traffic down when there's nobody there. It acts as a as a natural speed bump.
That's correct, absolutely.
Okay, thank you, and I got my last thing is really going back to the traffic circle. I'm so excited it's gonna be there. I know there's some restrictions on what can be done in the middle of the circle because of sightlines and all of that. But I'm a big public art guy, and I just see that circle sitting there, and I think the possibility is some type of public art that could be put in there without, you know, uh affecting sightlines for traffic. You know, and my mind goes back to, wow, maybe a silhouette of the silos or something like that tying into the garden, cuz it's kind of a little entrance way into the garden there. Um so I just hope at some point in time, the possibility of some public art right there in that silo or along Rio Del Mar tying everything together that shows kind of some of the history of uh the ruins, but I'm sure that's on your mind.
You you definitely read my mind, and uh I mean, I've been a part of the process of driving the roundabouts. I I I just think, you know, once people get used to them, they're just such a better way to deal with intersections. Um the only issue is the sightline issue, but the size of the roundabouts. Um in a perfect world, I'd love to have a piece of art there. I'd love to have a piece of art at the at the Newell and Rio Del Mar intersection on the far eastern edge of the project. I mean, again, I think they're just incredible visual cues to the history and also sets up, you know, the whole quality of the entire project. So hopefully, as long as we can get the sightline across that roundabout, there definitely will be a piece of art there.
Excellent, and thank you, everybody, to who presented, excellent.
Yes. Okay, any further questions from the commissioners? Um I think just to make sure, let's let me um go ahead and open public comment and double check if there's any further questions um from the public now.
Yes, we do actually have Chris James. Mr. James, please unmute himself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
We can hear you, sir.
Yeah, um I just wanted to follow up on a couple of things that were raised by the commissioners um tonight. Um so the the question was asked about grass in the front yards, and I think that it was kind of a vague answer coming back, or or a very brief answer coming back, but it sounded like yes, front yards will have some grass, it may be drought tolerant grass. But I'm concerned that we know when the, you know, the the grass hits the road or it hits the dirt, that the subcontractors will ultimately just put in whatever grass is available that day, and it may not be drought tolerant. It really shouldn't be any grass there at all, to be honest, if we're actually trying to, you know, reclaim ground from grass right now and save water. So um I'm hoping that, you know, um that could be reconsidered at some point during the development of this. I know that tonight it probably isn't the place to do that, cuz you can't put that condition on it at this point in the game. But it'd be nice to not have any grass in the front yard and encourage them not to put it in the backyards even. Um and I'm glad that um uh Commissioner Goff brought up about fruit trees. Um I exciting to see some fruit trees in these neighborhoods. I am concerned um about the the fruit dropping on sidewalks and people not cleaning them up. So I'm hoping the trees will be set back enough that the the property owners will actually take care of of collecting that fruit. I, you know, I I just like Commissioner Goff, I walk the neighborhoods quite often, um and there are a number of fruit trees and berry trees along our trails. And I I know, and certain times of the year, it's it's very hard to walk those trails up, you know, dragging that back into your house on your feet. So there's berries and plum trees that I see dropping all over the over the city um certain times of the year. So, you know, keep that in mind, you know, if if every house has a tree, um it's gonna be hard to um potentially clean that up on the sidewalks. Um and in closing, and I also had a little disappointment that all the, I think you said that all these properties, all the new houses are gonna be two-story, there's no single story. I remember way back at the beginning, this, and maybe it's part of another part of the development, you know, with that, yeah, that parts of this Watson Ranch that may be single-story, but I remember seeing that some of these houses are gonna be smaller houses. Um or there was plan for smaller houses for people to migrate from these bigger houses, you know, that have been developed over the years. So we could stay in the community and downsize as we, you know, the community ages and downsides into small houses. You know, the city has lots of big houses right now and very few small properties. So when I, you know, you know, come to retire and, you know, age out of not wanting to look after a big house, I'm hoping that, you know, we can add properties to the city that are, you know, newer properties to the city that are much smaller and easier to manage and still being close to, you know, amenities and such. Um again, thanks very much for a great job tonight, and um I look forward to um seeing the progress on this. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. James. Is there any other public comment, Ms. Jones?
Nobody has raised their hand. Um if you have public comment on this item, please raise your hand at this time. Nobody's raising their hand.
Okay, all right, so then I guess we will go ahead and close uh public comment on this matter, and one last chance, any other comments? Um questions from the commissioners before uh we entertain a motion?
Um Chair Navarro, can we give Mr. McGrath or someone on his team a chance to respond to um the public comment just now, because I do recall initially that it being said that Watson Ranch was going to have smaller homes and to the last public comment made. Could we maybe get a response on that?
Sure, Commissioner, I'm happy to take that on. Um I don't think uh in the history of of the last seventeen years of getting this project approved, that I ever uh discussed a single-story house. That said, if you look at the current square footages of these houses compared to the rest of of American Canyon, especially Vintage Ranch. So if if you look at D R Horton's plan, I believe it averages fifteen hundred to eighteen hundred and three different models. And then on on parcels fourteen and fifteen, the ninety-eight homes that that were approved at the end of last year, uh those average, I believe, uh two thousand twenty-one fifty and twenty-three hundred. So compared to to the existing footprints, especially the ones that were built over the last fifteen years in in not only American Canyon, but a lot of similar type cities, these are relatively small homes. Um you know, to 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 get a single-story house on a on a lot and and to get it to three bedrooms on the ground floor with a garage, with a den, with a family room, with a living room, with a kitchen, et cetera, you're gonna end up with a a uh fairly big, single-level footprint. And that's just not doable in this configuration. I mean, you'd have to have much bigger lots to to take on that footprint, so. Um you know, fifteen, we're gonna, I think on seven and nine, potentially, you're gonna parcel seven and nine, sorry, that are across Loop Road and north of the Affordable Project, you're gonna potentially see some even smaller homes, but albeit they they may be a combination of two and three stories.
Um, thank you, Mr. McGrath. So it it's really sounds like um the goal is is dense housing, smaller footprints. And so the economics of the project don't really allow for a single-family home which has a larger footprint, if I can sort of paraphrase what you said.
I'm sorry, say it again, it cut out for one second.
It, I think what I understood you to say was just the economics of the project is that you're going for denser housing with a smaller lot size, smaller footprint, so that leads more towards multi-story houses, and to have a single-story house would require a larger footprint, which doesn't really work for the layout that you've put together, essentially.
Yeah, and that's that's absolutely right. That's that's a great way to think about it. Another way to to kind of look at this, if if you look at the trail system, the Vine Trail, the Ridge to River, the other uh inner project, inner subdivisions that are inside this project that connected this. And then you look at the ruins, the hotel, the three thousand or twenty-five hundred acres of open space, a new open space, and and then the, you know, the access to the Napa River. The concept behind it was to take advantage of this larger backyard that surrounds this project and use that as as your area to get out and move around. And so and then the the other part of this is to use these footprints, you know, as your entry level housing, your affordable housing, your workforce housing. And it would be much, much tougher to hit that same audience with a uh a a single-level home on a on a bigger lot with the same with the same bedroom configurations. It would almost be impossible.
Thank you for your answer. Thank you for your answer.
Director Cooper, is there, do you have any responses to the, um, public comment? Maybe about the, the fruit trees, I guess, is be another concern or public works.
Um, well, well, thank you for that opportunity. Um, I would envision, of course, the applicant would know, of course, this is their business. When somebody is, you know, buying a new home, often there's a design center and there's various options they can pick. Um, I don't know if it's one of those things where they could select, you know, from a range of tree species in the front yard. But I think for a practical matter, if, if the residents don't like the tree in front of the yard, it's going to come out at some point. So, um, you know, these things tend to solve themselves over time. If, if, you know, the landscaping isn't to the liking of the homeowner. Uh, with respect to the lawn in the front yard, I just want to clarify in 2015, the city is, is one of the first in the country to adopt, um, the prohibition of lawns in the front yards of homes. And, um, and Watson Ranch came along after that, so it would be subject to that. And I think in terms of, you know, water conservation and it's a whole lot of practical reasons not to have a lawn in the front yard of the home in particular. It's, it's not really used for recreation as, as, um, was pointed out, the, you know, the front yards are kind of small anyway. So I don't think that would be, uh, something that would be a concern from our perspective because we already have processes in place that, that wouldn't lead to lawns in the fronts of homes.
Brendan, can I just add that we, we're not, we're not specifying any sod, any, any, what you'd call lawn. The California has actually very stringent C3 water standards, water efficient standards. So, you know, we couldn't, we wouldn't want to use lawn, even if we want, even if we wanted to use lawn, we wouldn't, we, or we couldn't because it, it's just doesn't get you where you need to be for the C3 code. So when, when I mentioned ornamental grasses, I meant, uh, they're actually low water use grasses.
Let me, let me go back to a comment that was made about, I think, just the, the fruit bearing trees and the ones that have a tendency to have, uh, uh, much darker staining juice in them, the wild cherry, the plum, et cetera. I agree with you. Um, I think those things are a mess. Um, they, when they, when they drop, they drop a lot of fruit. And typically, you know, people aren't picking that type of fruit. And so it has a tendency to, you know, leave a pretty messy sidewalk and stain it eventually. Um, that would not be the idea, my ideal fruit tree that I would be looking or fruit trees that I would be um, looking to have planted. The idea would be more using trees that people are actually going to use the fruit and, and pick the fruit as opposed to have it drop and then stain the sidewalks.
Okay. All right. So, um, I think, uh, we've had enough public comment and I don't see, unless there's any further questions from commissioners. I think, uh, we're ready for, um, a motion. I'm excited to see this project move forward. I know there's been a lot of work. This is, you know, years in the making and this is quite a big, uh, step um, for, for, for Mr. McGrath, of course, and for the city. So, um, is there any, do I have any motion to approve this project?
Yes, I will be pleased to, uh, make a motion that the, uh, for a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of American Canyon recommends to the City Council of the City of American Canyon to approve a vesting tentative subdivision map for Watson Ranch Lot 10 to create 219 single family home lots on 21.17 acres within the Watson Ranch specific plan, Lot 10, medium density residential, 16 zoning district. Located north of Vintage Ranch and accessible from Rio Del Mar and Rolling Hills Drive. Assessors parcel number 059-430-015 and 016. File number PL 21-0013.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Altman. Do I have a second for this motion?
I'll second.
Okay, Commissioner Wong, thank you. Uh, can we have a roll call, please, Ms. Jones?
Yes, Commissioner Altman.
I.
Commissioner Goff.
I.
Commissioner Wong.
I.
Vice Chair Malory.
I.
Chair Navarro.
I. Okay, uh, we have another resolution um, within this same matter. Can I?
And to, uh, jump in and, uh, say that, uh, we have a resolution of the planet and make a motion for a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of American Canyon. California approving a design permit for 219 single family home lots on 21.17 acres within the Watson Ranch specific plan. Lot 10, medium density residential, 16 zoning district. Located north of Vintage Ranch and accessible from Rio Del Mar, Loop Road and Rolling Hills Drive. Assessors parcel number 059-430 dash 015 and dash 016. File number PL 21-0014.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Altman. Is there a second on this motion?
A second.
Okay. All right. Can we get a roll call again, please, Ms. Jones?
Yes, Commissioner Altman.
I.
Commissioner Goff.
I.
Commissioner Wong.
I.
Vice Chair Malory.
I.
Chair Navarro.
Hi.
Are we sure we don't have a third one? Getting pretty good at reading.
Okay, I think that, uh, closes this matter. Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. He and Cooper. Uh, and also, uh, congratulations, uh, Mr. McGrath.
Thanks, everyone. Thanks, Commissioners. Nice to see you all again. Really appreciate the support.
Okay, thank you for all your work and contribution to our community. Okay. So, um, next item is a business item, if I'm not mistaken. Yes. Uh, it's a kind of a carry forward from last, uh, last, uh, commission meeting. Uh, an administrative citation, SC 2105-09, appeal for indoor cannabis cultivation at 51, uh, Polaria, uh, Drive, continued from uh, our meeting in, uh, July 22nd, 2021.
Thank you, Chair Navarro and Planning Commission. As you've mentioned, this is a continued item from your last commission meeting. Um, you'll call at the time, um, there were some audio issues, uh, with the appellant um, that didn't allow them to be able to participate fully in the hearing. Um, and so as an option, um, they were provided the opportunity to provide some written comments um, uh, to explain their, uh, perspective on the citation, which um, was received yesterday, um, and I believe distributed to each of the commissioners. I'm not sure, I, let me expand my screen if, um, the appellant is here.
Yes.
Um, and then also, we do have our police chief is here. Mr. Greenberg is here, uh, as well, um, in support of this, um, issue. I don't know if I might maybe turn it over to the city attorney. Much of, of the proceedings for this case is very different than the normal ones that we bring to the planning commission. Um, where we're, you know, envisioning new policies and ordinances or you have an application and you have discretion and a host of, of levers to pull to, you know, move it one way or another. This one is, is, um, in, in many ways, it's sort of a binary question. This will be up or down, yes or no, um, with respect to whether the citation was issued appropriately. I would say at the, at the chair's discretion, maybe the city attorney wanted to comment on um, the nature of your question being presented to you with this issue. Um, so he has some comments on that. And then perhaps also, uh, with regard to the correspondence that we received from the appellant yesterday.
Yes, thank you, Brett. Um, just briefly. Um, the, the issue here is compliance with a given provision of the Municipal Code, 9.12.09, um, zero, uh, capital D. And simply stated, it sets forth two criteria. You know, that the appellant in a matter like this, citation proceeding has to meet. One, there was no violation of the American Canyon Municipal Code, applicable codes or conditions or an entitlement or the citation recipient was not the, you know, the responsible, uh, person. We, before in the staff report, we went over that. And we presented the specific standards that are set forth. Um, unlike, like Brent said, these standards are what govern your decision here. Your obligation is to govern. Um, it is to evaluate evidence presented by the appellant to see if either of those two standards are met. But there's no basis for, for example, a variance from that. Um, you know, there was a lot of discussion about that at the last meeting, but uh, the point is if you want to provide a different standard than those two provisions of the Municipal Code, the remedy lies with the change in those standards. And that's something the city council can do. But it's not something that's before you tonight. So, um, these two standards were restated in a July 26th letter after your last hearing to the appellants to say that uh, those obligate, those are the two criteria they need to present evidence on. Right? And, um, more specifically, that they were to present evidence that, um, uh, rebuts or contradicts the established legal standard under the Civil Code. Um, that as the owner, they must ensure that certain conditions are met, which make the living space habitable and safe for potential lessees. Right? Very defined standard. It doesn't say, you know, in most situations, it doesn't say in all but a few. That's an obligation that's absolute on them as a landlord, as an owner. So it's in that context that you should evaluate any, any oral testimony tonight, as well as the letter that was received yesterday um, from the appellants. You know, it's about, um, uh, you know, three substantive paragraphs. And it sets forth the information. Is that evidence that meets these two standards? That's the criteria you should evaluate. Right? Is there something in there that says legally they're excused from maintaining that structure in a safe manner? Is there something in that letter that shows evidence that there's not a violation of law, which we know there is? Or that there's some legal theory or legal authority that relieves them of their responsibility to maintain a safe and habitable structure? So that's the addition that I'd add. So the, the standard's been defined several times now for the, for the appellants prior to the first hearing. And after the first hearing, specifically in writing, the additional evidence is the letter before you and anything that the, uh, appellants might say uh, before you, when they have the chance to comment on this matter. If there are any questions, uh, I'd, I'd be glad to respond.
Okay. A question for Attorney Ross. Um, knowing that this took place in COVID and they cited in their letter the fact that, uh, COVID was one of their reasons that they weren't able to enter the residence. There wasn't any type of, you know, changes or whatever put in place related to landlords and tenants, um, in COVID besides the rent collection that I knew of.
That's correct. There would be both the federal, state and then uh, local agencies were required to implement that provision with respect to evictions. Prohibition.
So, so it was limited to evictions, not inspections?
Correct.
Okay. There were no health ordinances that would prevent them to be able to reasonably inspect.
Well, okay, maybe more to the point is even without inspection is the legal obligation to maintain a structure in a safe manner and in compliance with the law. That's the starting point. That's the baseline.
Okay. There any other questions? Or our city attorney? Okay, uh, is, is the appellant on the line?
Yes, the, the appellant is on the line.
Okay.
I will ask them to unmute themselves. Mr. And Mrs. Wu, please unmute yourself. This is your opportunity to speak. They're on the line. There we go.
Oh, hello.
Yes, hello.
I'm here. Yes, uh, I, good evening for everybody. Uh, thank you for giving me an opportunity to hear. Uh, so just, uh, I said, I, I was thinking, I was asked some, uh, agents and to lease the house for me. But since there's a COVID-19, they would not do it for me. So that's why I have to do it myself. And I did all come, drop by and check the house for, in the front and bed because they don't let me go inside. So otherwise it would not happen like this. So this, uh, because of the COVID-19. So they, they, they don't even let me close to the door. So I just, uh, I run the house in the backyard and in the front yard and to check it. And also they, they, they pay their utility bill and I have no ideas uh, what they use, how much PGE they use. So I didn't know anything about that. So it, everything seems normal from the outside. So that's why, uh, they only stayed there for about six months. So I, I, I didn't know they, they were doing that. Otherwise I, I, I just stopped there, there. So the, the, the problem is the, the COVID-19 makes me, uh, difficult to do this.
Okay.
So.
All right. Um, do, do commissioners have any questions of Ms. Wu? Okay. All right. Is it, Ms. Wu, is there anyone else that we, um, you would like to speak on your behalf on this matter?
Uh, no. Tell everybody ladies, that's the truth.
Okay. Okay, all right. Okay, so, um, so I think now we, um, have been able to hear fully, clearly, everybody was able to understand, um, the comments, which we had troubles last time, um, hearing from Ms. Wu. Um, so I think we've resolved that and there is, there was a response in writing. Um, so are there? So it's not like closing public comment type thing. So, um, we can, uh, just, is there any, anyone want to discuss this or shall we, um, take this for a vote? If I don't see any requests for comment. Uh, let's see, I don't see Timmy. Okay. All right. So if there is no, uh, public comment, what's the next? Uh, this, this is a little bit unusual, I, uh, Mr. Ross. Is, is this just a vote or, um, um, a recommend, to recommend to the?
Um, I think it should be reflected on the, uh, the record as it is and the, um, documentation before you that this is the second hearing. Um, it was continued, um, to allow, uh, specific comment on the legal standards and the code standards applicable to a citation as is issued to a responsible person like, um, the owners and appellants here. So the, uh, staff recommendation remains the same. That, um, uh, in accordance with the Municipal Code Section 1912070, it's recommended that the Planning Commission deny- it's recommended that the planning commission deny administrative citation CE twenty one oh five dash zero zero nine appeal for indoor cannabis cultivation of more than twenty plants at the address fifty one Pelleria Drive, owned by the appellants concerning the citation.
Okay.
The Wu's.
And, and so our, our vote is to uphold the denial of their appeal.
That's the staff recommendation.
Okay. All right. So usually we have a resolution that we then take a motion on. Do we need to take a motion on a denial or can we just simply vote it?
You voted, it becomes a matter in the, in the minutes for this action.
Okay. So I, I think then we'll just do a roll call as to is to de- deny the appeal or approve the appeal?
I think you have to have a motion first with respect to the staff recommendation.
Okay. All right, so.
Attorney Navarro, I'll go ahead and make a new motion.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion to on the basis of approval of criteria not being met in accordance with the American Canyon Municipal Code Section nine point one two point zero seven zero to deny the administrative site or deny the appeal for the administrative citation for indoor cannabis cultivation for more than twenty plants at fifty one Pelleria Drive filed by the applicant.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Altman. Okay, can we go ahead and have a roll call, Ms. Jones?
Yes, Commissioner Altman.
I.
Commissioner Ba.
I.
Commissioner Wong.
I.
Vice Chairman Laurie.
I.
Attorney Navarro.
I. Okay, so. Okay, so then that closes that matter. Is there anything else we need to do, Mr. Ross, on this?
Then we conclude the matter.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. And thank you, Ms. Wu. All right, so next order of business is it is, whoops, sorry. Are there, I guess, just the planning items or any other reports?
Thank you, Attorney Navarro and Planning Commission. Just wanted to give you an update on some of the highlights in the community development department. I have some happy news apart from our status on project progress for you. Just this week, we've appointed a new permit technician for processing building permits. The one that we, Teresa Gilfus was our permit technician. She was promoted to city clerk. And during an interim period that she spent with the clerk's office, our administrative clerk Laura Welch serves as an interim function with the permit tech. And when she was, when she did that, she really took it on, did a terrific job. She even earned a certification in permit technician. And so she is our new permit technician. And if you kind of have a sense of what it's like to be a permit technician, it's very similar to being like an air traffic controller for building permits. We have hundreds of them landing and taking off all the time. And it's her job to tell them when they can take off and land and it's a high intensive position. So she's really showed a lot of initiative and, and, and so we're really happy for her. The other exciting news is we had a recruitment for replacing Jim Cannon, who's retiring. And we have a new person that's accepted the position. I expect her to start in the middle of September, name is Tiffany Ford. And, and she is a code enforcement officer today, City of Vacaville. So we're looking forward to her starting and she's really excited. So when, when she does start, we'll introduce her to the planning commission. So you can say hello and welcome to American Canyon. I told that everyone in American Canyon that works here is family. So I know that
Welcome to the family.
Everyone is, it's kind of how we are. Just quick update on, on some of the highlights. So the newest submittal we have is an update to the signs and color at Walmart. I just took a quick look at some of the colors and William has, has taken a look at it. It's not battleship gray. So I'm very happy about that. Looks like it's maybe just a modification to maybe an update or refreshing of, of the color scheme larger that's there today. I did notice that the main sign is already up, so they're ahead of themselves, but looks pretty good. You know, the big Walmart name's gone and then they're using kind of the, the, the yellow star. This kind of attractive feature. So that's, it's a positive change. Second item, Napa Airport Commerce Center Development Agreement. This is a housekeeping matter for all development agreements. Once a year, there's a check in on progress with accomplishing the public benefit components to the development agreement. And so that's something that's coming up, just came up. It's a consent item that will go to the city council. We're looking at mostly that's combination city attorney and staff. We received another application right next to Walmart on Napa Junction Road, an office on the ground floor apartments above. So mixed use, something I think we're all kind of hoping happens in our city. So we just have an application for that. Came in at the beginning of August and we sent out the first set of comments on that. Small site, but nice to see something of mixed use nature here. Let's see, the, we had two taco truck applications back in your May meeting and one of the two applicants appealed. It was heard by the council just recently and they overturned it. So we'll soon see Taco Truck over by Larry's Truck Toppers. So it's, was a tough, that was a tough debate. And everyone was really thoughtful about that and we all kind of vex over what's the right answer here. So anyway.
Ask a follow up, follow up on that. Mr. Cooper, did they put any type of length restriction on that or is it just a permanent?
There's no time restrictions, but the council, much like the planning commission, did note that the site is, you know, kind of a key location with older buildings. It's logical that at some point in the future, that's a prime site for redevelopment. And so, you know, if when that does happen, you know, there are tenants on the site. So we develop the site, you know, we'll, we'll envision change at some point in the future. So I guess nothing is, is permanent.
And they only acted on the one site, not on the other?
The other didn't appeal, right?
Correct. The other one over by Walgreens didn't appeal that. But I think the point is taken that if we were to get a new application of that location, there isn't a whole lot of basis to say no. So that is a message that we do need to follow up with the applicant just to make sure they have all their, aware of all of their options.
Okay, thank you.
But yeah, those are, those are tough, appeals are tough ones to bring to the commission. I know that everybody really is very thoughtful. You know, there is a lot of great discussion on both sides. I think everybody was kind of weighing on that one.
And, and I also, I listened to that council meeting and I think it's worthwhile to note, Director Cooper, there were a ton of written public comments submitted in support of the appeal. I think it's the most I've seen on any topic in the two years or three years I've been listening to council meetings. There were like, what, fifty nine written comments and like verbal comments as well? Fifty nine?
That's right. It's, you know, sometimes things, development is like Pepto Bismol. You've got to shake it up. Get a response.
Great analogy.
Yeah. Our PG&E project, I think most of the technical issues have been resolved. Apart from the landscaping, that one's really vexing the applicant. And so they tried a couple of different options. And if you dead ends, so they, they're still, they have the balls in their court to arrive at a solution and that does satisfy, if not the letter, or the certainly the intent of the zoning code. So there, we were hoping to take that one in September. We'll see how well the applicant does for this issue, which is in their court. See.
It's PG&E, don't expect much.
Well, you know, as William, we're just talking about this before our planning commission meeting. We do have findings and we do have some very, very unambiguous code. So between the two kind of speaks for itself. The Hampton Inn Zone Change, we're ironing out all the technical issues there. The applicant is very eager to come and see you. But I kind of feel, I think what we need to do is have one more council workshop to kind of talk about all the issues. I know that with the joint meeting, the council had with the planning commission, we touched on the marketing study. But there are other issues as well that I, I kind of feel we need to to, you know, full circle, come back on. So we do bring it to the planning commission. The planning commission has benefit of the council's perspective on some of these policy issues. So that's kind of my feeling on that. And I, now that I've said it, I really do need to call the applicant and let them know.
Are we going to be scheduling another joint, special joint meeting?
I hadn't envisioned a joint meeting on this topic, but that is something that the commission feels strongly about. I can mention to the city manager and see if that's something that, you know, is they could manage the council's agenda and their workload and the rest of that. So I could certainly talk of that is something the commission would be interested in being, participating in.
I, I mean, I, I, I thought it was a, a pretty good discussion. I think, you know, having some cadence of meetings, joint would probably be good. I don't know any, if, I think Commissioner Altman would agree. I don't know if others would.
Judging from the smile that there is like people secretly thinking, yes, I want to have another meeting.
It would just be good to like regularly have them.
Yeah.
If it's like every quarter or whatnot or.
Yeah, the cores roll around awfully fast.
They do.
It does. Okay, well, I'll.
Having fun.
Yes, that's right. Yeah. Well, you're a great commission and, you know, you really care. And it's, it's very, this is all really, really exciting and good. The Oak Hill General Plan and enormous slew of entitlements will move forward. We have it agendized for the September seventh city council meeting. We're feverishly finishing up the staff report on that one. The question going to the city council is going to be a resolution to decide whether to overrule the airport land use commission's determination. And then if yes, we have the environmental document. Then there's the general plan amendments for parcels A and B. And then the companion zone change for A and B. So there's kind of a bundle for the city council to discuss, and that is scheduled for September seventh. So we'll knock on wood that we get everything wrapped up in time. We're all working very hard to do that. On the SDG two seventeen, you know, the planning commission reviewed that project, gosh, way back in February, and it was appealed and the negative declaration was recirculated, fined. The applicant is thinking, maybe this isn't the best approach, but they want some time to think about how they would recommend we go forward. And so as a management update, last meeting of council, we got their concurrence to bring back a discussion with the council no later than the first council meeting in December. So we'll kind of working with the applicant on what might be a, a best approach to go forward. So that was kind of a little bit on, on some hold in a sense. Some of the other ones that are kind of exciting is the Amazon building up in Napa Logistics Park, received their occupancy permit just a couple of weeks ago. And so that's pretty exciting. It's a big, big milestone. There are some landscaping to wrap up. And so we've kind of allowed them to go forward. It's not obviously a health safety issue, which is critical to have everything resolved in that matter before we allow full occupancy. The landscaping is something that, that we have a good working relationship and we can kind of hang that one on the side and monitor it. They are, you know, diligently finishing it up. So, but that's nice to see that one go kind of land, so to speak, in a permit technical nature. Another building that's exciting is the Napa Junction Medical Building over by Tractor Supply, that, that framing is up there. And so that's moving forward. That will be a kind of the crowning finish for the Napa Junction Retail Center. The Village Vintage Ranch, those condominiums slash apartments over American Canyon Road and Highway twenty nine. We just got the, the approval for final occupancy on those apartments. So that's another one that I see finished. The Foo May Cannabis Use Permit that the planning commission approved in January, the applicant is working forward on, on getting set up for that. They plan to have another operator provide the delivery component to their business plan. And so we're kind of introducing a new person into this approval, kind of working through some of those technical details on, on that. See, and then home to sweets. I can't recall if we, this one was received in July. I might have mentioned it last meeting. I can't recall. They have a request for reimbursement for some of the physical improvements they're building, like Main Street, undergrounding utilities on the highway, water main, some of those things. And so we're weighing that request. Our normal processes would naturally allow reimbursement for some things when they're building more than their, we'll say fair share need is. And so that's more of a technical aspect of, of their request. And then when we kind of get reconciliation between us on that, then we'll go to the council because there is likely a balance beyond what they're asking for that they would normally get reimbursement for. And so that would be a policy question for the city council to answer. And so that's something that we'll be going to the city council. Well, depending on how the applicant responds to what we've given them, we'll see if that happens in September, October. And let's see, oh, the climate change. I know that was, we brought that to the planning commission your last meeting for the general plan amendments. That's scheduled to be discussed by the council in September seventh. So that's moving along. On the heels of that, we'll have some discussion on what to do about the ordinance. And let's see, we do have scheduled coming up a workshop on status update on the, on the education lifelong learning element of the general plan and the parks and rec. So maybe that could be another one we could pair with the planning commission. And that's scheduled for October. So we have a lot of good stuff going on.
Yeah. Very busy.
So any questions?
I've got one, I'm just reading through, I have number four, that some square mixed use building, I'm not familiar. Have you talked about that before?
I did kind of mention it, it's a small parcel on Napa Junction Road where there's two houses, old ones today. And it's right next to Walmart and on the. And so, yeah, it would be offices on the ground floor and then two floors of apartments above with an elevator. So. I mean, that's, you know, we've been looking for something like that in the Broadway District, so we're kind of enthusiastic about it. So. You know, it sounds like a great, great project. So we we got the application, we met with the applicant at our project review committee. We've heard of comments and so at this point it's in their court.
All right, so. Thank you, that's all you have for then, then I guess we can move to. Any commissioner items?
I'm, I'll go, I'll speak up. So thank you, Brent and William, for your great presentations tonight and this thorough list of projects. It sounds like you have both been very busy. And as far as commissioner comments, I did want to say that I signed up. I've been using the recycled water. And the delivery service is great, they give you the barrel, they come and they fill it up every week. Works like a charm. So if any of my fellow commissioners are interested in doing it, I would encourage you to do it. If you have any questions about how I'm using it, feel free to reach out to me, but it's great. I actually have a rainwater barrel, I went to one of those workshops the city offered a few years back. So I actually have that set up in my backyard and I just transfer it from the delivery bell in the backyard where the city drops it off, I transferred into my backyard and I just put my little watering can under the rainwater bell, spigot and I just water whatever I want. It works out great. And it actually saved quite a bit of water just by hand watering with the water they're giving me. I use it on my ornamentals and some vegetables I'm growing. So that's something I I wanted to promote.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'm going to jump on along with Commissioner Wong, also a member of the recycled water. Excellent service, I love it, they just fill it right up on the front of my porch and away we go. My other thing is, you know, I just want to draw everybody's attention, school's open. I want you to know that as a community at the high school, the kids are being fantastic. Masks are not an issue, they're always wearing their mask, they're very, very cognizant of separation and all of that thing. So I know that was a little bit of a stressor for communities with schools opening back up and I can tell you. Kids are doing great, no issues at all when it comes to anything around that. So I think they were well prepared for the reentry in. And our campus is so nice to have kids back on. Last year was a torture as an educator. This year is just nirvana, we got almost seventeen hundred and fifty kids on our campus, it's fantastic. The joy of city young people noise.
The best kids anyway.
That's true. Been here for twenty years and they're just fantastic.
Yep, can I jump in on this for a quick moment and ask Commissioner Goff, there's a rumor going around and if you can dispel it, that would be absolutely wonderful. But I've been advised, and I do not know that this is true, but there have been three COVID cases at the high school and one at the middle school. And if you have any insight that would be able to say, being there instead of it just being a rumor on the street to dispel it, that would be awesome.
I can say that at the high school, we've only had one incident and it was the very, very first day of school. And when it comes, because we do contact tracing as soon as we get to that report and there was no issue about possible spread. Because they were so active, they weren't around other kids within fifteen minutes. So not at the high school, middle school wasn't a work.
Awesome, no, I I I hope, you know, I mean, it's, none of us want to see any of it. And if there's anything that that any of us can do to make sure that only the truth is getting out there and that rumors are dispelled, that's in everybody's best interest. So that's why I figured nobody better to ask than somebody who's present on site. So thank you.
Yeah, and again, kids are doing fantastic, I mean, they are well prepped, they've lived through this and masks for them seems to be nothing, I would thought that was going to be my big thing was, put your mask on. Where's your mask, where's your mask? And I, lucky if I hand out one mask a day.
Awesome.
That's great. Okay.
So if I can jump in for a moment and just. Point out. For those interested, that September seventh is the first day of the two-day Jewish New Year of Rosh Hashanah. So.
Okay.
Expert city acknowledgement of of that, if the city is busy acknowledging other events and festivities for various groups.
Okay.
And then that's. Ten days later by what's commonly referred to as the holiest day of the Jewish calendar, starting the evening of September fifteenth and running till a little after sundown on the sixteenth this year is Yom Kippur.
Oh, okay. I think there's some major, isn't there a major? Those dates seem familiar, something else going on in Napa, by the way. Is it a golf tournament or something, anyway?
There's a, an event going on September eighteenth, hopefully crossing our fingers for American Canyon Community Parks Foundation, the the evening at the ruins. So we're crossing our fingers, it's still a go, but you know, things can change. So behind the scenes, you know, Selic and the whole team is working on that. But send over positive vibes that it'll be successful and hopefully by the next planning commission meeting, I can have a report, I can say how great it was.
Oh, great, okay. And it's all right, okay.
You know, Commissioner Mallory, is this the last one scheduled out there at the ruins?
You don't want to say that, this is an annual thing, so. As we work with Terry, we'll see what we.
As the construction moves forward, I know that's going to be a little bit more of an issue, probably.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sure something will work out.
So Vice Chairman Mallory, where do we get tickets and how much are they?
So tickets are already sold out. It literally went in about thirty minutes. And so tickets are sold out, but you know, there's a lot of sponsors and that have bought tables and things in sorts. So I haven't been at our last meeting, but I think, you know, if there are opportunities, then Janelle will be reaching out, we have a waitlist currently. So there's, I'm not quite sure how many are on the on the actual waitlist, but yeah, sorry, you didn't get it. Sorry.
Oh, well.
We'll send you pictures.
No, thanks, you're going, huh?
Every year, never miss.
All right, are there any other items, commissioner items? I have nothing, so unless there's objection, I think we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Awesome, thank you.
Good night. Take care, everyone.
Okay. Good night.